Good evening. Aloha mai kau. Welcome to the first meeting this year. The meeting of the Kuleo O'Kulaniiki Neighborhood Board will now come to order. Thank you all for being here to address the needs of our community. And of course, first of all, our firefighters who are always serving our community and rescuing us from dire straits. Please, the mic is yours.
Happy New Year, everyone. Good evening. My name is firefighter Kalistro. We're at Station 23, Waipue. I'm here to report the monthly statistics for our area. We had two nuisance fires, three activated alarms. Nuisance fires is anything outside of a vehicle or structure, so two of those. Thirty-four medical emergencies, three motor vehicle crashes. And if you are looking for any more information on the mapping or details on incidents, you can go to our website, fire.honolulu.gov, under the News and Info tab. And if you have any other questions, you can email our Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb, sorry, as in Neighborhood Board, at honolulu.gov. And with the recent storms, I just want to give you guys some tips to be prepared, you and your family, for power outages. Make sure you prepare your supplies, flashlights, radios, any batteries are charged. Prepare your family, especially anyone with medical devices or any special needs. Make sure you plan ahead of time and check in with them. Prepare your food, water, canned goods, anything you need for a power outage situation. Set your fridge and freezer to the coldest settings. Keep them closed as much as possible during an outage and make sure you fill up your water containers for drinking. Make sure you protect your electronics. Unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. And if you ever come into contact with downed power lines, make sure you don't touch them. Always assume they're energized and dangerous. And for any other safety tips, you can visit our website at honolulu.gov/DEM, as in Department of Emergency Management. And for any other information, wineelectric.com/stormcenter. And if anyone has any questions, we can answer them at this time.
Yes, please go ahead. We have both the police and fire. Did you guys have to save anybody during that storm? Because I was looking on Nextdoor Laokahui, they showed pictures of the Kalanioli Highway just before you reached Holy Trinity Church. And the flooding was up to the middle of people's car doors. And I didn't, and no one's mentioned that on TV. And I know whenever we have a bad storm, that's becoming a standard bad place. Did you have to save anybody or were there any flooded cars in that area? Because it was coming down like an avalanche, like Niagara Falls.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, we were off that day. Our watchers, three watches, and there was no reports of anyone being rescued or saved at that time. So hopefully, everyone was on higher grounds. And unfortunately for the vehicles, they're probably getting flooded out or whatnot. But yeah. Definitely, maybe a few years ago, there was that big storm at Kalani. Same thing, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for our firefighters? Well, we hope that your home and cars were safe. And, you know, again, thank you for being here and for taking care of us.
Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our, we have our police officers on Zoom. Okay.
Hi, good afternoon. Good evening. Lieutenant Thompson from District 7. I'll start with the story. There was three motor vehicle thefts, four burglary cases, six theft cases, and 12 unauthorized entry into motor vehicle cases. Total calls for service for that month is 6,079 calls. The safety tip for the month. The fire department was flash flood preparedness. Learn the best routes to high ground where you live, work, and play and travel should you need to evacuate. If the area is prone to flooding, keep emergency materials on hand such as sandbags, wood, and plastic sheeting. Do not allow children to play near streams or drainage ditches. Those areas can quickly become deadly. If your vehicle stalls in a flooded area, get out as soon as possible. Floodwaters can rise rapidly and sweep away a vehicle and its occupants. Do not attempt to drive through or move a vehicle through flooded areas because parts of the road may already be washed out or the water may be deeper than it appears. And when high, heavy rains threaten, even if the rain falls upstream, a stream can flood within minutes. Do not cross streams until the flash flooding completely subsides. And these tips can be found on Department of Emergency Management at honolulu.gov/DEM. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Does anyone have questions for our police officers? Please go ahead.
Hello.
Tim Stanton.
Hello. Good evening. I was involved in an incident last week. Seems to follow me around. I was down at Home Depot on the morning of the big flood. And the crosswalk, the marked crosswalk from the parking to the front door of Home Depot, I was a third of the way through. The rain had just started to come down. And a green Mini Cooper attempted to cut in front of me, didn't even bother to stop, missed me by about six inches. And instinctively, I shoved the shopping cart because I have to have a shopping cart to walk with. The police were called. I was charged with criminal damage. And the policeman said he cannot do anything on private property, especially for Kahuna, if they're caught in sidewalks. What is the truism of this, please?
Yeah, there are only certain traffic offenses that can be cited on private property. And a crosswalk is not enforceable on private property.
I think this should be made aware to all the neighborhood boards because all of us, unfortunately, are over the age of 30. As a lot of Kahuna. Now, I did some research. In Hawaii, proportionally to its population, has the highest incidence of people over 65 getting hit in sidewalks, which is terrible. I've always advocated that sidewalks should be illuminated, like in England, with Belisha beacons, so everybody knows what's happening. So you're absolutely telling me that if I was hit and struck in a sidewalk on private property, there's nothing that the police can do?
Correct. Criminally correct.
That's absolutely astonishing. I think we should shove this up to the city county. Because, you know, I think most of us probably weren't aware of that. Thanks, I really appreciate that input.
Unless it was intentionally done. There's no criminal case, but as far as a traffic offense, no.
Wow. Any other, yes, we have another question from Kevin Malkern.
One of my neighbors mentioned that they were bit by a dog that ran out of a house on Kalanioli Highway. From what I understand, the person was issued some kind of a port appearance. But two other people were bitten or chased before he was bitten. And then after the incident, there was another incident. In that, his attack was, the information was taken by the police. Is that something you're able to share with the board so that when we're walking around Kuleo that we're aware that a dog regularly bites people on the sidewalk?
I'm not understanding what you mean, that we put that information out there?
Yes, so I believe a total of four people were bitten by this resident's dog. The resident's been cited by the police. The resident has a day in court. The dog continues to bite people that walk by. Is that kind of information, the type that you could share with us so the rest of us don't get bitten when we walk by the house?
Were there other three incidents reported to the police?
I'm not sure. I just know that one was reported. A person's going to be appearing in court.
Yeah, we don't put that kind of notification.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question, since, thank you. I believe there are approximately 3,000 people now with concealed carry permits. When a dog attacks you, is that a permissible use of a firearm?
If you feel that your life, you can defend.
Thank you very much for answering that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Thompson. Are there any other questions for the police? Okay. Yes, Janine Johnson has a question.
Hi, I don't have a question. I just want to express my heartfelt apologies for our president letting over 1,000 criminals go. It's terrible when you did your job very well and people like the president don't uphold the law. And I'm very sorry for that. Just wanted you to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Any other questions or comments for our police? Thank you, Lieutenant Thompson, for all you do.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Kevin, I've seen people post concerns about dogs out of control on Nextdoor. And people do read Nextdoor.
Yeah, for the public's general information, since the police are able to share this, if one is walking to Hawaii Kai on Kalanioli Highway on the Maoka side of the road, the incidents appear to be happening a couple driveways before Kuleo Road. So one wants to exercise some care. I guess the gate gets left open or the dog seems to be able to leap over the fence. I'm not sure what it is, yeah.
Would you please post that, though, on Nextdoor? I think neighbors should know.
Everybody watches.
Just asking you.
Thank you. I will do that. I will probably get ready.
Okay. May I have the report from Board of Water Supply?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Name is Chris Sugimoto from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Share my screen real fast. Okay, so for the main break report, there is only one water main break last month. It was on January 2nd. It was an eight-inch main. Address was 5138 Poolah Street, and it was installed in 1968. To make sure our water announcements, topic is water waste hotline. If you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, malfunction sprinkler, running faucet, excessive watering, or something similar, please let us know so we can follow up and stop the unnecessary water loss. To report water waste, you can visit our website at www boardofwatersupply.com/waterwaste. You can email, contact us at hbws.org, or you can give us a call at 808-748-5041. Let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious and limited water supply. Water is the center of my report. If you have any questions or comments for BWS.
Yes, we have a question from Hailani Sunoda Pale.
Hi. Hi. So just, is there an update on the PFAS that was found in the Halava well? And also, is there any update on whether or not the Board of Water Supply will be recommending any more closures of wells and/or opening of wells? Thank you.
Yes, I can bring this back to the communications and then I'll have a response for you for next month's board meeting.
Thank you. And if, for those watching, the PFAS got into the well because of the US military contaminating it. And I believe the Board of Water Supply shut down, oh, there are three wells shut down, right? The Red Hill well, the Halava well, and there's one more. I can't remember the other one.
Is this for?
Because of Red Hill.
Or is this the field detection?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's Halava wells and Ia wells. So those three we shut down because of the flu that might be moving within the aquifer. So we don't want to risk pulling up field from the water. So we shut down those wells. But that's totally separate from the PFAS detection, that question that you asked me earlier.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, but PFAS is being stored at Red Hill because PFAS is found in the AFF, which is the aqueous foam that they use to, you know, for firefighting. And so they have to keep that, they have to keep that at Red Hill for 80 years to, you know, to ensure that there were no fires there. So, and then we all know that there were PFAS spills that happened over the 80 years. So, yep, thank you. I just want to end an update. Thanks.
Are there any other questions for Chris Sugimoto, Board of Water Supply? Seeing none, I want to thank you, Christopher, and look forward to your update next month.
Hey, mahalo, everyone.
Mahalo. We will now continue to board business. The first item on the agenda is the filling of vacancies in subdistricts 1, 2, and 6. Do we have any volunteers to serve on the board in Subdistrict 6? Okay. Okay. Yes. Are you Mecca Monson Gier? Why, hello?
Hi. So again, Mecca Monson Gier, and I am new to Aina Haina. Maybe came here in 2020. I know a lot of you have been for a while. I happen to be watching the last couple board meetings and seeing that you weren't making for them, and it made me very sad because obviously we want to see momentum and things happen in our communities. And so if you need someone to serve and step up, I'm happy to do that. I have two little ones who play in the, you know, the valley and are here. And so we plan to be here for a while. And she is, yeah. I didn't know what number it was, so I didn't jump up. But is it six? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So, but if anybody else, I think Mr. Walker was up last time. No, when I was watching.
May I have a motion to nominate Mecca Monson Gier for Subdistrict 6? And second? Yes. Go ahead and ask a question. Do you work? And if you do, who do you work for?
Yeah, so I work in education and I've been at a private school for the last 10 years as a director of financial aid. So also work in admission, work with littles, so kindergarten all the way through 12.
Very good. Well, let us go ahead with the vote. And our neighborhood assistant, Zoidell, will, I think he's already checked your ID and will swear you in, and you may join this meeting. Okay. Are there any objections to nominating Mecca for the Subdistrict 6 board member position? Okay, I'd like to proceed just with a hand vote since we have some members or one member who's online. So all in favor of Mecca Monson Gier joining the Neighborhood Board? Please raise your hand. Okay. Any opposed? Please raise your hand. Okay. You are, congratulations, you are unanimously elected to be one of our board members. And I think it's, thank you. Please go ahead, Chair. Does she have to, because we're at this jumping overtime, does she have to reapply or can she be there? Everyone here has to apply to the Neighborhood Commission, and I will discuss that a little bit later. And we, and question number two. Okay. The Neighborhood Board will now go into a short recess to allow her to be sworn in. I just wanted to ask if anyone else is having trouble signing up like we had a week ago? Yes. But I think the board needs to know. To, for. Yeah, I was gonna, yeah.
I'm gonna use someone else's computer.
Oh, yeah.
I had trouble signing in. Whatever they use. So if you, they're counting too quickly.
Mecca? Hi, Mecca, can you, why don't you come and join Frank Fujin? Come sit up at our table. Okay, the Neighborhood Board is back in session. And we are on board business. The next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes from December 4th, 2024. So the meetings of the December 4th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? It's because Janine is such a good secretary. All right. So if there are no corrections, the meetings are approved. Thank you, Janine. Our next item is requesting support for the Sunshine Law Amendment. And hopefully, you all got to take a look at this. And what, this resolution was submitted by the Neighborhood Commission, which represents all of the Neighborhood Boards. And what this resolution asks is for legislators not to change the way that Neighborhood Boards have been functioning. So what happened is the Office of Information Practices, or the OIP, someone there requested that we could only talk about items that are listed on our agendas at the Neighborhood Board meetings, that we couldn't even ask for help from our officials, our legislative representatives unless it was a listed issue. And this would very much limit what we can do as Neighborhood Boards if we can't talk about anything that isn't printed on the agenda that goes out. So by voting to support the Sunshine Law Amendment, we are supporting the Neighborhood Commission, our representatives, in allowing Neighborhood Boards to continue to address community concerns that are not listed in the agenda. May I have a motion to support the Sunshine Law Amendment? Thank you. Second? A question? Go ahead. Well, well, let's see. Motion first and then second to discuss. We need a second in order to discuss this. Okay, we do have a second? Okay, so continue with debate if you have questions. Yeah, I do. Okay. I'm happy that they're trying to deal with this, but I'm confused when they say that the Neighborhood Board has no advisory authority. We are here to advise. We're here to discuss and advise our representatives on what the community feels. And then it says we cannot request assistance. That's vague. We can't request assistance of whom? It's not clear. I would need to see that be clearer. We can't, it's not written down clearly. The intent is not clear. I said that 10 times. Was I clear? But I think since they're writing it down, it has to be clear who we can't request assistance of. Because that's like telling us we can come here with our hands tied and mouths, you know, stuffed, closed. I'll request clarification and we can. Is this a timely, is time sensitive? Can we look at this more closely and come back next month? I believe so. I think we should, because just to get the language good. Because I've, you know, the language, the devil's in the details and it's in the language. And we'll find it might create, what, sorry. Please go ahead, Kali.
The, it actually says, it's a legally, a legal thing. Because I serve on a commission, I've seen the language, so I'm kind of recognizing it. So it has no advisory duty. We don't have a duty to advise another authority or a legal duty. So it doesn't mean we can't give our opinions or from our perspective, advice to anyone, the public or elected officials. It means we do not, we are not mandated to provide advisory guidance to elected officials. It's a hair breath, but.
If we could just clarify that language, I'd be comfortable. But I think it's not clear on paper. I'm sure the intent is good there, but it's not clear on paper.
If you look, it says, be it finally resolved and then be it finally resolved. So it's been resolved. What's been resolved is we can discuss, we can advise, but we have no authority. And I think that's what you were saying. And that's, excuse me, and that's perfectly clear. It says be it finally resolved, be it finally resolved, and it doesn't look for nitpicking. I think they've gone through this quite substantially at some time. And I think it's very clear. I mean, I understand when I was talking to some of you prior to coming on the board, I knew exactly what we were going to do and what we can't do. And it's resolved here, so I don't think there's any real need to discuss it anymore. I think it's quite clear.
I'm sure the intent is good. The language is not clear. We need to clarify so that people, I've been on this board 35 years, and the quibbling that goes on about what we can and cannot do, believe me, comes up every other year. All the naysayers. We know we have no authority, but we're here to advise. The language is not clear, and I'm sure the intent is just wonderful. Everything, everyone's for sunshine, but this needs to be clarified. It's my understanding that items that we want to be able to discuss and ask for help about community concerns that are not listed on the agenda. And I agree with what the Neighborhood Commission is asking for, that, and namely, that is to allow Neighborhood Boards to continue doing what they have been doing.
Exactly. I think it's perfectly clear, absolutely clear. And I'm English and what, American, so I understand English.
Kali, please go ahead.
So just to, maybe if it makes it any clearer, if you look at the whereas before it, unlike other city boards, Neighborhood Board members are not required to receive ethics training or file financial disclosures. neighborhood board members are not required to receive ethics training or file financial disclosures. I have to do that as a commissioner and we really don't want to have to go through that, I, I don't think. So whereas barring a very few exceptions, so there are exceptions, but neighborhoods, boards don't have advisory or legal duties. Okay. Because it's a legal term and, you know, that's what runs our life these days, legal terms.
It's perfectly clear.
Okay, okay. So.
We can't help.
We could call, we've been, had a, the vote's been called for. Yeah, we had a motion and so now we move to.
Are you ready for the vote? Okay. All in favor of supporting the sunshine law amendment and the ability to discuss issues that are not on the agenda? Say aye or raise your hand, raise your hand. Okay, please put your hand down. All opposed, say nay. Three.
That's it.
Okay. We are going to do, we are going to vote again by roll call. Because we need to get the numbers straight. Tim? Shelley? Bill? William, sorry. Colleen?
Hi.
Tavin? No. Janine?
Hi.
Hey, Alani? Sherry? Frank? Mecca? Four, six, four, not adopted. Okay, so the, next month, can we repeat this next month? Can we put it on the agenda for next month and clarify the language? Do you want, what do you say, Colleen?
Well, I don't know that it'll pass next month either, but we can certainly put it on the agenda. What we can't do is if somebody showed up and wanted to talk about something today that's not on the agenda, we can't listen to them.
Resident concern.
That's why I want it to.
They can under residents' concerns.
If, if you, if you read that, that, that.
Resolution.
Resolution, if we adopted this, we could. Well, we can, but we will be not in compliance.
Okay, we will put it again on the agenda and who, and let me find out who can clarify it for us. Or if you can, if you want to clarify it again at the next. Okay.
If you want to.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
What is your concern?
Yeah, my concern is any, any kind of amendment to sunshine law or any kind of, I, it's, it's an issue at the ledge right now and it's an issue in our, in the United States right now. So I think we just have to be very careful. It is a building block of democracy and so we, for myself, I'm actually like, I literally just submitted testimony about sunshine law. So I'm not gonna vote to, I'm, I'm not gonna be a hypocrite and say, well, it's okay for me, but it's not okay for other commissions or boards to amend the sunshine law or to, to, um, to only pick and take what they want from the sunshine law. And I understand, we don't have any power here, but then we should operate as a, as an example to the community.
Please go ahead, Colleen.
Hey, Alani, did you, did you read the material about how this came about? It was a, a very narrow interpretation that somebody made, changing the way we have been doing things all along. And so we would no longer, according to this new decision, restricting our ability to run our meetings. We would no longer be allowed to have third parties who come into our meetings speak to us about agenda items, uh, agenda, items not on the agenda. So it's not, it's not trying to narrow the sunshine law. It's trying to strengthen it because it has been narrowed by this Office of Information Practices, Policies, OIP.
Great. He would not bring this up, I think he's not on the agenda.
He's not just thinking.
No, he's not. I tried this up and I broke the business, but if the other laws were, were things stuck through, I would not give that. I passed the bill next month. I'm more deliberate, putting these stuff to the limit. You know, I think after you stop blocking, I'm calling, it's three, four. All right, I broke it up, but you broke it up. But it will be again, not be allowed to, period. That's exactly.
Wait, so we can't have this discussion? After the, I mean, it's on the agenda.
But if the sunshine laws are not, I definitely didn't say this. So for example, for the safety of the. In fact, we didn't.
You can talk, you can talk to the police. If you have an issue, you can talk to the police. And if you can't, let's disband the neighborhood board. Let's bring the neighborhood commissioner in here to talk to us and talk to us what this whole thing's about. Because the more you talk about it, the crazier it seems. And we're sitting here passing stuff.
It is.
Well, it's, have the neighborhood commission come and talk to us. This is like all of a sudden we're passing something? It doesn't make any sense.
Well, I'm sorry, it makes perfect sense.
Some of us have diminished capacities and need a lot of help.
I understand that, but that's got nothing to do with the price of eggs, by boy. You're just being so obstructionist. Go away, find.
Don't call names.
To read this to you and explain.
Excuse me, can we call order, please, and not call names? We're having a discussion here. We are now going to go on to the, this will be put on the agenda for the next time and we will request a member from the neighborhood commission to come in, clarify it for us. Thank you for your interest. Yes, go ahead, Chair. Oh, Stephanie. Yes. And we, and she will provide it. Do you want to provide it the next, at the next meeting?
It, it was in an email on Friday, January 3rd. We need a directive allowing interaction as the subject line.
Okay, so we will put it on the next, on next month's agenda. Okay, the next item on board business is illegal fireworks. And Tim has offered to, to discuss this with us.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Thank you. I come from a country with a lot longer history of fireworks, Guyfords Night. It's November the 5th and we have a dummy, we send him around the neighborhoods in a pram and it's penny for the guy. And it reminds us that we nearly lost our democracy when they tried to blow up Parliament. Coming here from Papua New Guinea, I was amazed in the way in which fireworks has taken off with the younger generations whereby they want to see more and more explosive or explosions. Personally, I can't see how that reflects, and I'm, I'm going out on a limb here because I, I've only been here since 83. But I'm assuming that the firework philosophy here has come in with the Chinese population when they were manning the, the sugarcane fields, for example. I do not think that the Chinese philosophy with fireworks was ever going to be centered around blowing people up. And unfortunately, it's been working towards that every year since I've been here. One could argue until it blew in the face that it wasn't the intention. That's not the point, it's the result. And it's the result, and I can't quite work out why the state authorities don't have the capacity to stop this at the docks. Obviously fireworks aren't coming in by air because of the restrictive practices with searches at the airports. I could be mistaken, but listen, not tons at a time by air on one flight. They're coming in, in containers. So if we want to try, I'm not saying we should stop this because some people hold it dear that this, they've been doing it since 1976. That's not the point. I think the point is to protect our neighborhoods and I'm sure all of you saw the first response on the news when that house blew up, or the garage, garage blew up. And then apparently the house next to it, their fireworks blew up and the house opposite, their fireworks blew up. It must be that there's a large quantity of these type of pyrotechnics. And to me, it's drifting away from pyrotechnics, which tend to be aerials. And these are thunder bombs now and people think it's fun. 10 people this week, I think, it might be corrected, have been arrested in addition. I think in the last 10 days, two more people have passed away. The point I'm trying to make is those families have been hammered now for the next generations. So my question is, for what? This is not something which is traditional. To me, it's going way beyond that. Thank you.
May I have a move to draft a, a support, a letter in support of the bills that are, that are trying to address this in particular? There, the bills that make it a felony to sell fireworks that cause injury or death? As well as bills that fund the, the illegal fireworks task force? Okay. Thank you. So this board is in support of those bills? Okay, great. Next, Shelley Ham will talk about the, some updates on the Manoaia Street garbage pickup issue. Go ahead, Shelley.
Yes, so I don't know if anyone else saw it, but in the mayor's report dated December 4th, I didn't feel like we got a really good response from the mayor on that. It was vague, it referred to emergency vehicles and to call the police if you see people illegally park. It, I took the liberty of walking up and down the street. Apparently, according to Clarissa, I may have missed a part, so I need to go back and look at it again. But the part of the street that I saw that had the no parking signs was as wide as about, I think I measured 15 other streets for width to compare it and it was the same. It didn't, there didn't appear to be any real reason for the signs to be on this portion of the road inconveniencing the residents. So I would like to look into this further. I did leave a message for Mr. Chris Goullet. I have not heard back yet, but that could be because I left it really late. I don't blame Chris for that. But yeah, I would like to look into this more and to see why this particular street was, has no parking signs where other streets, which are in fact more narrow, do not have the signs.
Thank you. Do we have someone who is online now who could help us to look into this issue? Okay. Adam, could you?
Hi. Hi. I just wanted to say that I did speak with Chris Goullet, Collections Administrator from Department of Environmental Services. He did ask for the community members to call him. I can leave that number with Zoidel. And he said, please reach out to him. He is aware of the situation and would like to discuss it with the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'd like, I have an announcement to, to all of our current board members and, and anyone who is interested in becoming a board member to please register at the neighborhood commission office by February 21st. I'd first like to ask how many board members, of our current board members have tried to register on the site and had difficulty doing so? Okay. Can you please mention that? Who has not tried going into the site? Okay.
I tried and, but having known that you're telling me that part of the issue.
Oh.
Sorry, dear legislature is not paying enough attention to some of the software. You have to be very, very patient. So when you type your name in, say for example, Tim, you have to wait for that to register. You can't, you can't just go Tim and then click Stanton and then your age or whatever. You have to really wait for the thing to access the database and be imprinted on the software. But I can understand people's frustrations because there's a whole lot of software out there where you have to be really patient and wait.
All right. Zoidel will bring up the issue with, with the neighborhood commission or neighborhood commission office so that they know that there's a problem.
Of course, it'd be a lot easier if everybody got mailed a form, but that's old fashioned.
Oh, good. Okay, great. I'd like to just mention, just a minute, Cherry, some, can I just make a plug for, for signing up on the NCO website? Many of you here have been, have been, you know, wonderful and joined us in the middle of the year and what you, and, and we couldn't function without you. But you have missed out on some of the things that you're, that you receive, some of the perks that you receive if you do sign up online and, and are elected to represent your sub district. And that includes a formal recognition from the neighborhood commission office and the city and county of Honolulu, either in the form of a letter or a certificate. Also, you get invited to the new member orientation and installation ceremony where you get a formal swearing in, new member training, and the chance to meet your peers from the other 33 neighborhood. and the chance to meet your peers from the other thirty-three neighborhood boards. So, and that's pretty cool to get, to get to go to the orientation. So please try again with the site and, and also submit the PDF. Well, the PDF that Zoidel is going to send you, but we need you for next year or the next two years.
I love to be sworn at.
Okay, we are now in that point of the meeting where anyone who is here, a member of the public of your community, and that includes board members, may bring up concerns about items that are not on the agenda. Yes.
I know we've talked about it before the meeting, but can we make some kind of formal request? Let the neighborhood commission look into the, what do we call, the little mice at play, the fishing that's going on in all the boards, not just ours? We need to get some kind of official response about that because it's going on a lot all over. So it's beginning to seem personal to the neighborhood commission. Thank you.
Kevin, this is not your kind of fishing. Can you give an example, please, Cherry? Well, what you just received and gave a copy of to Zoidel. So these are emails that are targeting, I think, I believe they are emails that are targeting people who are on the neighborhood board or seem to come from, from officials in government and other neighborhood board members.
The trouble is, it's eroding the faith we have in officials trying to contact us for whatever reason, but this was obviously nothing. Dita Holyfield requests, are you free at the moment? Best regards, Dita Holyfield. Like, two or three days ago at twelve noon, around twelve noon. And I immediately thought that was a scam because it didn't identify her, even though I knew who she was. It didn't identify her and it didn't give any way to contact her. So that's going on. And plus, that thing that went on when they were asking about PayPal or Shelley or I, I'm not quite sure what was going on. They were saying, I needed money and you can put it through PayPal and it was going to Shelley and Clarissa and Clarissa asked for money and it's like, come on, the neighborhood commission, I want to feel they're taking that more seriously on some level, you know, to help.
How did this, how did you receive it on a phone or on?
Email on.
On the phone?
Yeah.
It does mean some of us, we have to be responsible to some extent. And VP, VP org, VP, that's the best one. That's anti-fishing. It's not too expensive. If anybody needs any help, I'll help you install it. CC Cleaner is a good one to clean your hard drive on your notebook or computer. And it just cleans out, I do it every two days because we have two companies and people are always wanting to give us money, loans, et cetera. And I ask them, do you tell your mummy you're doing this? But that's another story. But unfortunately.
Very good idea. Thank you. But I just want to know that the commission cares about that.
Yes, please go ahead, Shelley.
So in looking at the message I got from Clarissa a year ago, it's from Q WRT thirty-three twenty-one at virginmedia.com. So I think just as a note, to look at the actual email address attached to the name and the phone number, just to keep yourself aware.
Janine, hi. Go ahead.
Hi, sorry, this, I, apparently you couldn't see my hand earlier. And I apologize for that. I changed my background, so you can see my hand up now, but I just wanted to state that when Tim talked about the fireworks bill and fireworks in Hawaii being the result of the Chinese that came in through our plantations workers, that may have been true in the eighteen hundreds when my great grandfather came through. But it is not true now. It is Americans that do it on New Year's and July fourth. Did you hear any fireworks last week, Wednesday, when it was actual Chinese, Chinese New Year's? No. No one heard anything. So I heard to say, don't, don't attribute the massive load of fireworks that we have in Hawaii to the Chinese because it is an American tradition and that's who does it.
No, I wasn't alluding to that. I was just pointing out, it's empathizing that it came here with the Chinese and it's been ambushed. Exactly, you're exactly right. No, I didn't mean to intimate that it's a whole bunch of Chinese behind my house. No, 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 no.
Okay. Anyone, any other members of the community here, including our board members who want to bring up something that they've heard about that is, well, that is concerning you as a member of the community?
Yes, I've been approached. I live on Paula Street, which is one of the longest streets leading up to Kahalakua, which is a private gated community. There's two big bends and this really is for Adam. I mentioned it before, the grass needs cutting. Well, all of a sudden it was cut the week after Christmas. And there's a gentleman with some sort of construction company. They're building four, four or five houses on that bend. And they're parking their cars on the sidewalk at the apex of the bend. And I've been approached by many people, maybe ten people outraged because they walk up there. They don't see it until the last minute and they have to walk in the road with the cars coming behind them. So they can't see the traffic. Occasionally they'll park on a spare plot of land. I don't know who it belongs to, but there's going to be a lot of construction there for four or five new houses. And going up the street, going up the street towards, towards where I live. People have taken on the next big bend and these are clearly marked with double yellow lines. They've taken down all the no parking signs because there's another house that's being renovated. And they park in the middle of that. And there's been a couple of incidences. I think a dog was run over because the lady had to jump out of the way and left the dog in the middle of the road. It's terrible. So it must be me. It's all happening in my district. Anyway, those are the two aspects on Paula Street, which is causing now quite a lot of inherent danger. Thank you.
Tim, I would just like to read some follow-up from, from the mayor regarding the, the Paola Street grass cutting. And it states that DFM's Division of Road Maintenance performed grass cutting along Paola Street on Thursday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Have you had it, have you been by there since then?
Maybe I'm too cynical, but that's when the guy started accessing and putting a fence up for access to build the houses.
Oh.
They couldn't get in otherwise because there's too much grass.
Okay, so maybe they, maybe it was cut. Okay. Any other public concerns? Oh. We'll let, we'll wait till he gives his report because he's, it's almost his turn. Yes, please come up to the mic. No.
Thought I had two minutes.
Not, come up, please.
Hello, Brian Walker. This concerns dog parks off leash, on leash parks. And if there's, the way the signage is now, dog has to be on leash at this particular park up in Wailepe Valley. But if there's nobody there that's using the park that, that doesn't have a dog. So all these people with dogs, can they be off leash unless somebody comes to the park, want to utilize the park and say, you know, we prefer you keep the dog on leash? So my experience just recently, there's hardly anybody at the times that we go up during a certain hour that doesn't have a dog. So there's not like their kids playing softball or kickball or families out there gathering. These are all dog owners. And so if they have the dog off leash and nobody objects, is that something that can be written as a rule to use that particular park?
Go ahead, Shelley.
So living in this neighborhood for a little while, I have noticed that it really is unofficially the dog park. That's where people go. Is there any reason why we can't just convert it to a dog park or a portion of it? Because it really is largely used by dog owners and very rarely do you see anyone other than dog owners.
Yes, Tim?
I think, I think it's going to come down to liability in the long run. The, the big boohas down in City Hall, their attorney, their attorneys are going to say, no, we can't do that because this is one chance that a dog will bite somebody pure accident and then somebody will file a lawsuit. I wouldn't be surprised if, that's the reasoning behind it.
This is a city.
I'm aware of a, yeah, it is a city and county issue. I'm aware of the, what's been happening in Kailua and Kani Ohie. It took many, many years for them to finally get a dog park, which they now have officially. And it's, it's quite small and there's a lot of other problems with it, but it cost a lot of money and it took them absolutely years. So what I would like to see, this is a great opportunity. Maybe we can find a way as a community to come up with a solution that really works best for the community. Like if, if really people with dogs are the only ones. Maybe we can say, maybe you guys can organize yourselves and say, okay, well, we, we really want this to happen during these specific hours. And then maybe you don't have to go and everybody knows that between six AM and nine AM and between whatever, whatever, whatever works. Then, then if there's consensus in the community, then it can happen without jumping through years of bureaucracy.
Okay, I'll make the changes to sign tomorrow.
Is there, is there a sign? You know, okay. Well, that's really unfortunate, but maybe there's a, maybe there's a way to reach out to that person and, and have a, and, and have a meeting. I mean.
Sure.
Just, you could do a petition if you want a dog park. That's a good start. You do a petition. And then Adam Dew is here, our, your city councilman.
Okay.
Rep for the city councilman and go through it that way because they're very popular. They're so, the one by the film studio, the one in Hawaii Kai. They have, anyway, the, the mayor knows, the city council people know in every district, dog parks are popular. So do a petition. See if you get a lot of people. That's go a long way to getting what you want up there.
Get started on that right away. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Is this particular plot big enough to be split? So you could make part of it general public use and part of it for dog park?
Sure, they can have the smaller side of it.
Otherwise, Kanaeoli Park down here is really big and part of that, I think, could be fenced off.
Well, when Wailepe Valley was converted over, when they closed down, I'm sorry, Wailepe Valley Elementary School. So that's usage where, you know, they don't allow dogs. So people that could use, utilize that part, they could go to there instead. It's just right across the way.
Because if you came up with a plan with a specific, as you were saying, a specific plot and get a petition, three thousand signatures.
Three thousand?
Oh, yeah. Everybody and their dog owner, uncle.
Okay, we'll get started.
Go ahead, Shelley.
So already there's an informal split. On one side where the elementary school is, that's basketball, pickleball, playgrounds, a little open area that's sort of on two sides, has school on it where the kids will play, kick the ball around, that kind of thing. So, and then the other side is unofficially the dog park. When my kids go to play, they go to the school. And then we know that the dogs are on the other side. And if we want to play with dogs, we go over there. I don't even think that the park would need to be split. It just would need to be designated somehow. And it's largely fenced already as well. It just, the dog owners have created a safe space for the dogs. We just need to add one more fence and a gate and we're solid.
That's what.
And signage.
Because somebody, somebody down at City Hall is going to come up with a legal recommendation to deny it. It's going to look negatively. But if you can just need a fence, that would be great.
Sounds like you're on your way.
Thousand minimum?
Yep. Well, stay tuned.
Many different forms of handwriting.
Thank you for bringing that up, Brian. Okay. Mecca, please.
So in preparing for getting to know you and more about what you do, I found that I kept running into kind of some misinformation about when to be here. I'd come up to old pages. And so I just wanted to know if there is a way with that we can either partner with the person in charge of like the Facebook page or something that we can kind of more communicate with our actual constituents and people that would probably want to be here and hear about it, even get the link out. And I think in the electronic world, there's more that we could be doing. So if somebody needs to spearhead that or we can partner with somebody, that would be something.
Not. Oh, well, would you be, are you familiar enough with social media to be able to, to put out current information on, on this neighborhood board?
Yeah, I can definitely help and get trained and access and all that stuff.
That would be great.
Um, I, I'd like to know what page you're actually looking for because we do have a, are you looking for the Neighborhood Kuleo Kalaniiki Neighborhood Board? Oh, okay. On the Facebook page for Neighborhood Board number two. And then there was another at home on a computer that I ran into.
That is not our page. That is the Inahaina Community Association.
No, not that page. It's a Facebook group.
That Inahaina Community Association advertises the board meeting.
Yeah, so there's some misinformation and if we had somebody who spearheaded that, we could get those dates just updated so people knew the right date.
We do have a page with accurate information. No, it says Janine@Hawaii. So, but what?
So I could even do some.
It has the link.
I can do some homework and get some pages, but if.
I have, I am on the page along with Janine, the actual page. Again, this isn't the Inahaina page, so we don't control what they have on theirs.
Right. There's a couple of pages that I ran to, ran into and so we're just trying to show up here.
Okay, so we, we have an official one. If you would like to help with the official one, that would be awesome. And I, I know I'm going to be getting your email.
Yep. And then we're okay to also reach out to maybe friends who want to help support us, obviously, and get them to update their information as well.
We really do need to get the word out. So Janine, would you be able, would you be willing to work with Kawi and Luke and, and Mecca on, on the social, our social media footprint?
Absolutely. Can I get her email sent to me?
Yes, we, we will, we will disseminate, we'll give her, give out her email once we have it. Just to those who need it. Of course. Okay, it's time for officials' reports. And our, our first official is Congressman Ed Cases, Representative Julia. Or Julie, are you with us tonight? Okay, she's not on. Dita Holyfield for Mayor Rick Blandiardi. No, okay. Dave Day for Governor Josh Green.
I am here.
Hey.
Hey, can you hear me guys all right?
Yeah, and we can see you as well. Hi, Dave.
Hello. Dave Day here, Kuleo resident and representative for Josh Green, also special assistant to the Attorney General. First meeting of the new year, legislative session is in full swing. The, I'm glad that, I was glad to see that, that you voted in support of fireworks reform this year. Obviously, that's a major issue. And the Department of the Attorney General played a substantial role, or we actually drafted the governor's bill relating to the criminal penalties and specifically the sentencing enhancement for fireworks disaster, I mean, basically fireworks incidents that cause substantial injury or death and basically bumping those up two grades per. or death and basically bumping those up two grades per, uh, uh, act, basically. So basically, if something was a misdemeanor, it would become a class B felony, which would be punishable by 10 years in prison. Um, if it was a class C felony, it would then become a class A felony, which is the highest felony under Hawaii law. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, but then also, um, just any other questions in general. Thank you for the support of fireworks reform.
Yes, question from Shelley Ham.
So it's my understanding that the biggest issue with fireworks control is enforcement. I've heard, and I don't know if it's true, that the police officers say that if their hands are tied, if they don't physically see someone light the fireworks and no one rats them out, then there's nothing they can do. Is this in fact the case?
So that's one of the issues that is being addressed in the, so let me just answer your question. There is, uh, substantial truth in what you just said, um, in that, uh, the fireworks laws as currently defined, hold on a second, my daughter. Um, fireworks laws as currently defined, uh, uh, make it very difficult to prosecute, uh, uh, these crimes. And pardon me, I'm having a little bit of, uh, what do you call it? Reverb echo in my ears. So I'm just trying to deal with this. The, so currently the definition of fireworks is something that's being reformed, um, so that basically it would be something where you don't have to actually physically have the evidence of the firework in order to prosecute these offenses. One of the things that's also part of the bill is for like sort of smaller offenses. So let's just say there's a single aerial that goes up in the air. Under the current law, that's very difficult to prosecute because basically the firework and the evidence is destroyed in the process. Um, the, one of the reforms is that for low level fireworks offenses to have a, a, a civil penalty, a substantial civil penalty involved, so that basically in these like little to no evidence cases, they can be prosecuted based on, uh, instead of beyond a reasonable doubt criminal standard, it would be a preponderance of the evidence standard, which is greater than 51%. So it would be sort of in the same range as like a speeding ticket or a parking ticket. But this one would have a, a significant financial penalty attached to it, which the legislature is going to debate how significant that should be. Uh, but so, so to answer your question, uh, member, yes, um, that is something that, um, there is, um, some truth to that for sure. Um, but that's something that we're aware of and is being addressed.
Please go ahead, Kawi.
Uh, there, there is a bill to address this. It's going to be heard, um, this Friday at 2:05 PM. Um, uh, so you have time to submit testimony. It's HB 806. I encourage you to get online and submit testimony if fireworks are an issue for you. It's a good bill.
And, and member, is that, is that, uh, the, uh, uh, the vehicle is like maybe 70 pages or so? And it's, uh, I think Rep Mariyoshi, among others, that sponsored it? Yeah, the Department of the Attorney General is in strong support of that.
Yes, Tim, go ahead.
Hi, uh, Happy New Year. Good to see you.
Happy New Year.
There's always the, um, horse and the cart. Um, I firmly believe in stopping it at source. Uh, what's being done in that direction?
Sure.
I, I don't think the volume comes in by air. I think the great volume comes in, you know, the tons at a time in shipping containers. Um, what's being done to rectify that? Because if we can cut it off a source, then the legally, I was going to say nice fireworks, but the ones that are acceptable, um, generally aborted, um, Long's, Sam's, Costco in a package like a family pack. Um, I don't think those are quite so dangerous unless, of course, people then disassemble them and reassemble them, make them into bombs. Thanks.
Yeah, sure. And I, I heard your comment about that before. Um, that is something, um, that's, that's a difficult issue. Um, because so there's multiple jurisdictions that are at these ports. But I'll tell you, in this bill, um, one of the real features of it um, is, uh, the fact that, so basically there are, um, legal fi, or so I should say, of the fireworks that would otherwise be legal that come into the state, uh, that are permitted. As of this time, one of the sort of gaps in information and sort of the way that information sort of disseminates and it's very unclear, um, you know, where there could be, um, diversion of these otherwise, uh, you know, of these fireworks is that as of the present time, there's no central state or local authority which is responsible for, uh, for basically for responsible for inspecting these shipments as they come in. It kind of goes to various ports. And then, so there's various entities that are inspecting it. Uh, I, I believe in the bill that, um, uh, Member Lucas, uh, mentioned along with the one that's, uh, the governor's, uh, as part of the governor's package, uh, would require that all of, all such, uh, permitted fireworks, uh, basically be inspected by the Honolulu Fire Department. And so it would be a basically centralized inspector that would be responsible for this. Of course, you know, the ones that come through the mail and, and shipping containers that are unmarked, those are always going to be the illicit ones that, I mean, that's going to be why we have things like the fireworks task force, which are responsible for investigating those things. You know, I'm going to note, one other thing that is, um, of, of note is that the Department of the Attorney General, um, recently, um, accepted a guilty plea of, uh, for instance, uh, a, he was a, a prison guard at OTC, um, who had had fireworks that were shipped there. So there, it's basically, there's, it's a, it's, takes a village to prosecute these things. Um, but I think that there are important reforms in the bill that will move forward. And then, of course, as we learn from that, we can, we can continue to improve.
Thank you, Dave. Yes, please go ahead, Frank.
Hi, um, I got a question. You know, um, I was in law enforcement for over 30 years. I was not even aware, um, that you already had on the books, uh, homeowners are responsible for people who are setting illegal fireworks off on their property. Um, I think that's something that should be, that education would be a very important component for people to know. Um, piggybacking that, um, I was about, um, introducing a law that would make it a bigger crime, um, make it a big crime to, uh, set fireworks off on the street, you know, because what people are doing is, uh, the hell would, uh, people don't set it off on their own property because they don't want their houses to burn down. So they go, uh, to get on the streets. And we need to get them off the streets. So we get them on the property. So we get to the homeowner.
Hey, I think that's actually a very, I think that's a very interesting idea. Um, so we, it's, it's, so the bill that Member Lucas mentioned, it's a 70-page bill. I'm not exactly sure what the status of that on, um, uh, of that in the bill and whether there's a specific provision relating for it. But I actually find that very interesting. Um, and I, I think that that's something if somebody wanted to testify on that. If you wanted to have some sort of, uh, maybe a sentencing enhancement for using, uh, a public thoroughfare like a street um, to set it off, that there would be some sort of, uh, additional penalty associated with that. I think that would be very interesting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or com, or suggestions? Yes, please go ahead, Kevin. And would everyone who, um, is addressing our officials, please state their, their first and last name so, and because some of you, like Kevin, even though he probably knows you, you don't have a.
I do know him.
You don't have a name tag.
My, my wife makes me wear the name tag and the phone number. I, I tend to collapse from time to time. Um, I, uh, thank, thank you, Dave, for all you do. Um, I handed out a flyer and possibly, um, our neighborhood assistant can, um, uh, give you a copy, but, um, the former, uh, Chair Heather Lum and her husband, uh, took the initiative to, uh, clean up the, um, I think I call it the Inahaina Monument. Um, uh, they mowed and edged and trimmed. And I'm not sure if it's state property or city property, but they, they did a beautiful job, um, and it got me inspired. So, um, I helped along with some other neighbors, but I think it looks a little better now. Hopefully someone has noticed the brimilias and they cut grass and it's green and it's growing. Um, but, um, I'm concerned about the, the maintenance on the highway. And, uh, I believe the, uh, contract is with a private company. I assume it's public information. If I could get a little more information about who's caring for the highway because the palm trees are dying and, and Heather Lum and her husband shouldn't have to maintain something we're paying a private contractor to do. But if you could help us, uh, get that information, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely. And are you, are you speaking about the palm trees that are sort of on the, uh, on the median on Kalani'ano'ole? Is that where?
Yeah, I, yes. So the, the entire, um, median strip is collapsing. I, I find it hard to believe that someone could actually kill neta plum or zoysia grass, um, or, or allow the tops of the palm trees to fall off. That may not be that big of an issue because once the coconut rhinoceros beetles get here, it won't really matter. They'll be all gone anyway. Uh, but, um, until they get here, it would be nice to give them some water, a little attention. And we are paying, I'm sure, a private contractor a substantial amount of money to take care of our public areas. It would be nice if Heather Lum and her husband didn't have to do the job or, or I help. But it was fun to do it and the rock looks better. So take a look at it when you drive by.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I will, I, I'll speak to, uh, my, uh, our supervising deputy attorney general who works at the, or who represents the Department of Transportation. Um, and I, I'm gonna, I'll find out for next time who it is that maintains that. Um, and if somebody could send me the document that he has, that would provide me with, uh, I could be more precise in sort of my, uh, my investigation.
Hey, Dave, thank you for being, thank you for being with us tonight and, and, and helping us to solve our concerns or look into them. Um, I would appreciate if, um, if we could just have a list of the bills that are, um, that are still active that pertain to, um, illegal fireworks in particular, um, making it a felony to possess the fireworks that, um, that can cause injury or death. And the other one that supports the, those that support funding the illegal fireworks task force. So that we can submit better and more accurate information in, um, supporting those bills.
So I think Member Lucas actually, um, so this one I think is probably pretty easy to answer. Um, the Member Lucas mentioned, um, that on Friday, there's going to be, um, a hearing. Uh, and it's going to be before the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. I believe it's at 2 o'clock. Um, the agenda, so, um, that, uh, that agenda, uh, is a, is full of fireworks, uh, bills. And I think that, um, knowing Chair David Tarnus, um, like I do, he would only put ones forward that are serious um, and that, um, are worthy of testifying. So I think that, um, so I think that, um, um, if you go onto the legislature's website and you look up the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee on the House side for Friday, I believe it's at 2 o'clock, Member Lucas. I'm not, I don't know if you know off the top of your head.
Yes, I'm looking at, I'm looking at it is 2:05.
2:05. So don't be there at 2. You'll be early and then 2:10 you'll be late. But I think 2:05, um, that's the one, and it's chock full of fireworks bills.
Thank you, Dave. And take care. You have a, your daughter's so cute. Back to your parent parental duties.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, um, City Council Chair Tommy Waters, Representative Adam Dew. Adam, you're on.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Adam Dew from Council Chair Tommy Waters' office. I would like to congratulate your new board member. I believe her name is Mecca. Uh, thank you for your and the other members' service. I do hope all of you guys, um, will be on your upcoming, uh, elections ballot. Um, regarding the fireworks, uh, discussion, I did want, want to point out that, uh, the State, uh, Department of Law Enforcement does have a, a free app to report illegal fireworks. You know, I know that fireworks aren't only, um, set off during our, our holidays. Um, that sometimes can even be more of a disturbance because, um, you're not prepared for it or your pets are not prepared for it. Uh, that app is called Safer Watch App. It's a, it's a free app, um, for your, your smartphones. Um, it is pretty cool. I have it, uh, here on my phone. Um, you can, on this app, you can upload photos or videos, um, that can help, um, law enforcement. You can even, um, upload audio recordings as well. Um, so I encourage you to, uh, download that app. Uh, there's also a anonymous tip line if you don't have a smartphone. That number is 808-517-2182. And they just encourage you to, um, give as much, uh, details as possible when reporting. Uh, I know that the, this board is very interested in the Wailepe, Wailepe Bay Stream and maintenance. Um, in prep for this meeting, I did check with, um, the department a couple of weeks before. At that time, they said they're about halfway down, um, making their way down to the stream, um, or down to, um, the ocean. They're working Ma'aka to Makai and they expected to be finished, um, by April. Um, next, I'd like to give a shout out to New Valley Middle School, Marilyn Hutton, who received the prestigious Hawaii Assistant Principal of the Year Award on January 30th. Um, as far as the city council, they've been very busy meeting, um, with and confirming directors. Uh, in January, the council passed Resolution 25 dash three, which reaffirms that, um, the solid waste landfills should not be relook, read, or should not be located above our aquifers. Uh, another one, um, that was important to us was Resolution 2535 reaffirming Olelo Hawaii as an official language of the state of Hawaii. Um, we did have an incident at, uh, the city council that you may have, uh, have seen. Uh, we just wanted to make clear that the council does con, condemn any mischaracterization of Olelo Hawaii as a dead language and we encourage its use, um, in our Hawaiian culture and encourage its, um, use at our city council meetings as well. With that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions or bring them back to Chair Waters.
Yes, we have a question. Please introduce yourself to them, even though it probably knows you.
Thank you, Adam. Um, I haven't seen any, um, work on the stream, um, at all. They started about two months ago and, and went maybe 20 feet at the second bridge and they stopped. So I was very surprised to hear that they're working on it now, to be quite honest.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, thank you for that update. I'm sorry to hear that, that complex what they have told me, but, um, I do take your word for it. Um, I'm almost at a loss for words, but, um, I will follow up with the department again on that.
I did happen, I, I took a walk, um, along the stream and checked the Boulder Basin yesterday. And, um, I, I confirmed that they've gone about halfway down the stream. They haven't reached the, um, the Hind Street Bridge yet. And they haven't gotten behind my house on, on Keaholo Street. But it seems like they're working in sections. And also I noticed that the Boulder Basin was, was clear both be, before and after the, the storm that we had last week. So that was reassuring. And I haven't heard of any, any homes in Inahaina being flooded with the last storm. But I, um, have you heard anyone, um, having a problem?
The first bridge is, of course, the highway. The second bridge is the West High. And the third bridge is up by Wailepe Circle. I mean, the school, I'm sorry. Um, I haven't seen any improvement. Um, they did a few feet on the third bridge and that was it. The basins, yes, they did clear those, but, uh, I don't think they're actively working and I'll recheck that.
They haven't done any active work for at least a month. I agree. There is, um, a note, a follow-up from the mayor's rep report stating that, oh, it was in response, Bill, to, um, to your mention of the overgrowth. And the response was DFM's Division of Road Maintenance is currently working in Wailepe Stream. The crane is still in the shop. However, we are doing the work manually. Crews are currently working near Ani Street, but operations may be halted due to the pending extreme weather conditions and will restart when resources are available. And this was dated February 5th. But, thanks. Thanks.
Tim, you look like you, okay. Yeah, Lonnie, please go ahead.
Okay, so Adam, I just wanna share, I always give you guys an invite to come out to Wailepe to help with our burial grounds. We do have a work day on the twenty-third, so we'll be sending that out. I just wanted to let you folks know, Adam, and then also you folks about that. And then also, I had a question about the house. I don't know the address, but it's, if you, it's across the street, take a right, and it's on the Makai side. There is a huge pile of dirt in this, in the yard. Have you guys seen that house?
Where? What street?
It's, it's actually right on Kalanianaole, and there's a house with a huge, do you know what's going on with that? Okay, you know what's going on.
Yeah, so they, they, they actually made a presentation to us at, at one point, and they're being, they have to, they have to build it up because of sea level rise and the setback. So it's a requirement. It's funny, it's the second house that has done that. There was one closer to the, the golf course where they were, they, they talked about doing it when they presented to us. But this is the first time I've actually seen them do it. Yeah.
Yeah, my, my concern is just for the reef. I mean, if that dirt hits the, I mean, that could destroy any kind of sea, whatever's out there, you know, in the ocean.
They do, there is a retaining wall at, at that property. I don't, I don't know about the other one, but that one, I know for sure, there is a wall. And that, anyway, they wouldn't, they, they weren't allowed to build the house unless they did that.
It was in their presentation.
Yeah, yeah, it's just like, wow, if that dirt gets in the water. Well, anyway, so.
Um, Tim had his hand up first. Go ahead, Tim.
Oh, can I finish what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. No, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished.
So February twenty-third, four to six, if you guys aren't busy, we do have a cleanup day at Kiki Lanis Circle. And I only had that question about that house. And there was one, oh, yes, and I wanted to announce that on Laokooa on Hawaiian Independence Day, that was on Thanksgiving last November, we did have a ceremony out in Mauna Lua. And if you guys noticed, there's a change in name. So now, if everyone can please, in, in the spirit of Olelo Hawaii Month, use the correct name for Mauna Lua. It's not Hawaikai, it's Mauna Lua. So, and then also, I was hoping we could have a discussion, and I'm wondering if we could put it on the agenda, on the Hawaiian homes plans, the plans to build Hawaiian homes in Mauna Lua, which is, you know, adjacent to our neighborhoods. I went to the Mauna Lua Neighborhood Board. I think it was last month or the month before. Anyway, there's a lot of opposition to building Hawaiian homesteads on this side of the island. So I thought maybe we could have a discussion about that in the next meeting, and I'll get somebody from the CHL to come and talk about that. Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Adam? Okay, Tim, please.
Yeah, I, I'm hoping that this is the right vehicle, but Adam, Carolyn and I would like to sincerely thank Tommy and the board. Oh, because the Manoa School of Music was given a recommendation and a plaque for the service we do. She also was the American Piano Teacher of the Year last year. And I was invited to the Manoa Neighborhood Board, but the spinal tumors didn't allow me. But there's been a lot of violence in Manoa marketplace. So I just wanted to put my two pennies in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe, well, it's the last part of that. Me, Kevin was next. Kevin, please.
I just wanted to share something about the big mountain that they're making by, by New, New Valley to build a house. Several years ago, the monster home in Kuleo on the right side of the highway at the light before Kuleo Road, there was a lot of discussion about that. I spoke to the owner, and that was actually a building requirement for him to raise the house up off the ground. So it, it wasn't that he was building a monster home, it just, that was what the building department requires now, which is kind of crazy. Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. Please go ahead, Shelley.
Just two things very quickly. Could you pass along to the right person at three one one that there's been a sign down for nearly a year now with a jagged, like jagged metal sticking out of the ground. I'm concerned some children will get hurt. I sent it to three one one a very long time ago. It's not been addressed.
Where's the sign?
It's at the intersection of Ahuale and Houle, like right there in front of my house. And my husband denies that he did it. So, we're good. Also, were we going to revisit the Manawaia Street thing? Were we gonna talk about that?
Oh, okay. Adam, were you able to hear Shelley's update on the problem, the garbage pickup problem at, on Manawaia Street?
Yes.
Do you know if someone could take a look at that and see if, if, you know, if anything can be done to improve the service to the, the residents along the, at the end of the street?
Yeah, so I did speak to Chris Gurley today. He did say that inspectors did go out. He would like to speak with the, the residents of that street. So if you, if you can reach out to him again, I did leave his telephone number with Soydell.
So that, that will be emailed to you, Shelley?
Okay.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Adam. Yes, one more question from Sheri.
Hi, Adam. This is actually going to be for you and for Casey Abbe. I, I mentioned it earlier. I saw on Nextdoor Laokahi, someone had filmed the flooding on Kalanianaole Highway, but it was also coming down a street, a lane in the Holy Trinity Church area, a flooding during that one day, that one day storm. And it's in, it's flooding on the highway up to the middle of the car doors. And I was hoping there's some way the city and state can get together and look at why that flooding is always happening in the same area as when we had that horrible storm years ago where it flooded out homes from New Valley to Aina Hina. It's, it happened again, and I didn't, the press didn't cover it. They were going downtown and showing of awful flooding. It was horrible. Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. It was frightening. And the reason I'm bringing in the city is that there was a lane I never knew existed, because you saw this raging Niagara Falls coming down from the top of the mountains all the way down to the highway into the already flooded highway. So the city and state's got to get together if they care, if the residents care, why that's continuing to happen and be a problem area. And I know it started when they rebuilt the highway in nineteen nineties, when they were going to resurface, and then they reconfigured the whole highway. And they, it's been a problem ever since. And I think there's substandard storm drainage there. So if they could look into it, I'd really appreciate it. I know it's not my area, but hey.
I believe it was filmed. I saw it on a film clip. Yeah.
I'd like to follow up on your comments.
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
Because traveling towards, from Aina Hina towards Hawaii, sorry, to Costco, that new stretch of road, I don't know who paid the contractors, but the drainage on the left-hand side, A, they don't work when it rains, and it has to rain a little bit and they flood. But secondly, I've known of many people who've had the suspension and fancy car wheels, like a wire wheel, cracked, going along that road and bump, bump, bump. And those drainage dishes are about, what's that, nine inches? Eight inches between below the level of the road, they come down each time, traveling on the left. Your left two wheels next to the median. And people tend to veer and keep to the right side of the road. I think that's all incumbent on what Sheri was saying about the flooding down there. It's a whole stretch of bad drainage dishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Hilani.
Okay, this is how you pronounce Mauna Lua. It's Mauna, Mauna? It means mountain. Repeat after me. Mauna Lua. Mauna Lua. Mauna, so Mauna means mountain and Lua means two. So it actually refers to the, the mountain on, on the side of Mauna Lua Bay, and it also refers to what everybody knows as Kohelepelepe, but it's Kohelepelepe. So it's Mauna Lua.
Thank you, Hilani. Janine has a question.
Hi, I just wanted to state that, you know, the flooding was very bad in the area regard, near to Holy Trinity. And that has been happening since before the highway was widened, because as a member of Holy Trinity Church, I understand that the, the driveway where it comes down has always had that problem because it's too steep. They, the building department allowed that house to be built up higher, and then that area consistently gets washed from peckle ridge. And they did try to put in a, you know, like a French drain underneath before it hit the the street. If you go by there, you'll see it. There's some grates along the, the whole driveway there. But when that water comes like that, where it's so saturated, I don't think it can handle that area. But I, I did want to state that the city took care to, to empty out the the sewers in Aina Hina, where the residents have suffered with sewer backup into their homes every time they get a a flood. And the city maintained pumper trucks consistently to pump out that sewage so that their homes were not flooded. And I just wanted to thank the city for that, because I can't even imagine having that happen in my house. I was getting, you know, sewage backed up into my, into my house and in my street. And they, they took care of that very well, even though they do have to work on some of the other things, but they did that very well.
Thank you. Thank you, Janine. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, so I was, I did drive through there at that time. We were trying to monitor the stream mouths. And so I did see it firsthand. It was, I was driving through, it was pretty spooky. But yes, we are, we are following up. I'll, I'll continue to work with Casey Abbe to bring the city and state together to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And I, and I do want to convey appreciation to Council Chair for helping to keep the Ahuale and Houle Street stairs clear vegetation so that pedestrians are able to pass between those two streets. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
We'll now go to Senator Stanley Chang, District Nine.
Hi, everyone. Aloha. My name is Zephany Smith Eisenstadt, and I'm pleased to be serving on the Senator's staff as a legislative aide this session.
Oh, hello.
And hello, everyone. And just to kind of pick it for you left off, Happy Olelo Hawaii in History Month. We are looking forward to recognizing that in our office, along with some of the other commemorations. So as Dave pointed out, the legislative session is now underway. Any guesses on how many bills made it to the three thousand? Good guess? Two thousand? All right. The, the number, roll, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine. So that's how many bills we are in a sprint to process right now. When we come back next month, we'll have a much better sense of those that are going to be affecting the district that seem to be making waves and progressing. But right now, it's just sort of all hands on deck. You can visit the legislative website. I'm sure many of you have accounts where you can subscribe to updates about the issues that are of interest to you, the bills that you want to follow, and the committees that you want to follow. You can get updates directly to your inbox live. If you'd like to be a part of the action, would like to submit testimony and otherwise. This session, Senator Chang has two leadership roles. He continues to serve as Chair of the Housing Committee, and he's serving as Chair, Vice Chair, excuse me, of Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs, along with serving on the Judiciary, Water and Land Committees as well. The Public Access Room is available. You can come by in person at the Capitol and receive assistance with tracking legislation, finding your representatives, whatever you need to engage in the process. And then you can also give them a call anytime. So we like to highlight that resource. If you'd like to connect with us, the fastest way to get to us is senatorschang.com. And on that website, you'll be able to subscribe to two different newsletters. We have a district newsletter that just came out as well as the housing newsletter, which comes out every Wednesday. So there's a fresh one that just came out this week. You'll find resources and activities for senior citizens, opportunities and updates for students, homeowners and other demographics that are regularly shared through these channels, the newsletter, the Senator's social media, and other updates. So please plug in with us there. You can give us a call or stop by the office anytime. We're happy to be of assistance to you. And just wanted to point out a couple of highlights from the January twenty twenty-five newsletter. If you all saw the news that came out, the Senator was successful in helping to secure two point one million dollars for a fish pond located on the new shoreline at the base of Kalapa Omaa Ride. You can read all about that in the newsletter. This is a photo of it prominently displayed. So we're very excited about some of those resources being brought to the district. He provides an update on some of the road rehabilitation projects that are taking place in Wailea, Kahala and Aina Hina. And updates about the bird flu. Good job, Hawaii is offering specialized creative industries training courses this year. And then information about healthcare and contacts, things of that nature. So we're here. I am one of your fellow neighbors, so a lot of what you've brought up, I've lived through it right alongside you, and I'm familiar with some of the issues that you all have brought up. So I'm delighted. I've got dinner to get to for my little toddler. So I don't always get to come in person, but we are here and happy to be of service to you all. Any questions? Yes, it is. See, I don't want to get in trouble with pronouncing all of the pronunciation. But it is here in East Honolulu. And I did take an Olelo class, so hopefully my kumu isn't watching this. But the Kalau Ha'i Ha'i Fish Pond in East Honolulu. Okay. Okay, all right, all right, kumu, I did it. So right on the shoreline at the base of Kalapa Omaa Ride with Mauna Lua Bay to the south and Kalanianaole Highway to the north and private, we haven't highlighted there. You want to get to it and see exactly where it's at. So very excited about some of these resources that the Senator's been able to advocate and help bring to the district.
Yes, please. What is it he did for Kalau Ha'i Ha'i?
Two point one million dollars was secured. This was part of the capital improvement project funding.
For what year?
This is from our January twenty twenty-five newsletter. So I think this was recent news.
How, how interesting. You, you would think I would know about it. Both Janine Johnson and, and I are, are board members of the well.
Happy holidays.
We know we got it, but we just never heard, Senator Chang has never come out to the fish pond or done
We know we got it, but we just never heard, uh, Senator Chang has never come out to the fish pond or done anything with us. So this is interesting that um, well, actually Representative Hashim got us oodles of money. And Representative, and Senator Ihara is the one who put it forth in the Senate. So this is a surprise.
Okay. Well, yeah, he's got um, they've just done another round of requesting projects. So he's.
I'm excited to hear he's now supporting it.
And if there's other, yeah, areas where he can be supportive, uh, plenty of folks. Thanks to everyone who did show up on opening day. We served donuts from the district. And we got to hear a lot of uh, neighbors' interests and concerns. But he's, he's very open to um, other ideas and bill ideas. So I'm, I'm, I'm brand new to the office, but I am finding him to be very open and interested and uh, responsive to ideas and concerns.
Well, thank you, and you're welcome to come anytime.
It's bedtime for my toddler. I've got dinner in the trunk, so I won't stick along too long. But it's, it's great. I wanted to at least for my first one, have a chance to say hello to everyone.
Great. Nice to meet you. Thanks, Senator Chang, for allowing you to, to report to us.
My pleasure.
Well, um, so Representative Mark Hashim is, is next on our officials' report list. Oh, Jane.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you? Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, members.
Hi. What would you like to tell us about tonight?
Well, um, thank you for having me. I um, just wanted to check in. I've been listening along about the fireworks.
This call is no longer recorded.
What?
And then um, yeah, we are obviously in the middle of um, session filing all of our bills as um, everyone's been talking about. So this year, Rep. Hashim is the Chair of Waterland, which is a new committee for us. Um, also a member of the Judiciary Committee and Public Safety. So in Waterland, we see a lot of bills relating to, you know, wastewater ma- uh, stream maintenance, cesspools. Um, on the land side, we're hearing um, Kaka'ako Makai bills, all kinds of, of different things. We did um, we did, yes, get a lot of money for that fish pond for you one year. This year, we had a lot of capital improvement projects for the schools. Um, I took care of handling that request for all the schools in your neighborhood. And um, yeah, anyway, I just wanted to say hi and I'm glad to kind of see what the issues are around your community. I lived in Inahaina and I lived in Hawaii Kai for many years, although I live in downtown now. So one thing I did want to mention was during the storm, the most recent storm, I was able to um, get in touch with the Department of Transportation for some people in Waileupi that were having really bad flooding into their yards on the ocean side of the peninsula. Um, and part of that drainage is, is maintained by the state. So I was able to get her a tracking number through the complaint department to get someone out there to look at it. So if anyone um, you know, if we can help in any way, um, we're happy to. Uh, Rep. Hashim's number and email, I'll put in the chat. And um, please let us know if there's anything we can help you with in your neighborhoods.
Jane, this is Chair Burkert. I was, um, could you please ask um, anyone in, in the Waileupi Peninsula? They'd be willing to represent their community here at the Neighborhood Board? We've been asking to have a representative for a long time and no one has volunteered. So um, you know, if they would like to um, be more proactive and, and bring their, the concerns of their, of the, of the residents to us, we would, we would love to have them join in, in solving problems together.
Okay, sir. Great idea. Yep. Thank you.
Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, Jane. Did you hear earlier, we were talking with Adam Do about getting together with someone at the state level? Casey Abe at the State Department of Transportation and maybe uh, Mark Hashim, Representative, to find out if they can do anything about the flooding that always happens when there's a bad storm. It always floods on the highway between like New Valley and before you get to Inahaina. It just gets really bad. And I know there are different reasons for it, but they need to be able to do something about it. Because it doesn't happen elsewhere on the highway, the way it happens there. So if you, do we need to formalize that or can you have?
Where's the flooding now between Inahaina and where?
On Kalani'ana'ole Highway. And it's between, well, what I saw on Next Door La'Kahi, it started probably back somewhere after going ever from New Valley before you hit Inahaina. And it was very bad in the uh, Holy Trinity Church area.
Okay.
Coolio also.
I don't know if you know what ended up happening in um, by Waileupi, was that the state actually had to go in and make an underground uh, you know, wastewater facility, you know, for the water to go underneath the highway and then empty out into the um, Waileupi area. So it may, you know, needs something like that if the water is really bad. But if, I'm not really sure what you're asking me. If you wanted to um, set up something with the Department of Transportation and Rep. Hashim and who else?
Um, our city councilman. Adam Do represents uh, Councilman Tommy Waters.
Okay, yeah, they, I mean, they, they talk.
It's a, it's a uh, city and state problem. It's not just one or the other.
Yeah.
They need to.
I mean, yeah, city and um, city and um, city council like maintains that um, you know, most of it. But yeah, if at some point the state has to get involved, then the state has to get involved and help out. Correct? So.
The highway is steep and the highway is what is really flooded. Obviously, the, oh, look at that pictures. The city properties flood into, there, there we go. That's it. If you go backwards, you can see this lane coming like a Niagara Falls down. It's, it's a state highway, but the city floods into it. So it's, it's already a problem on the state highway and the city water makes it worse. So it's, they both have to work together somehow in their infinite wisdom.
Exactly. Okay.
I think.
I will, I'll pass it along to um, Rep. Hashim where the flooding is between. He's very familiar with this area, very familiar with the flooding. You know, obviously people have been talking about it for a while. So I will.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everybody. See you next time.
Okay. Great to see you tonight. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So next is Casey Abe. Next we have Casey Abe who's um, we, um, this, the issues we talked about are, we'd appreciate your, your input.
I'm glad you're elevating it to the elected officials because those are, really need to be elevated above my level. Because they have to talk to my director and hire up because that will be requiring a lot of uh, funding and design work and investigation above my level. So I'm glad um, your folks are getting the elected officials involved so they can reach out directly to my uh, bosses. But um, I can uh, share with you my uh, normal um, things. So.
Go ahead, Casey.
Okay, can you see my screen here? Uh, good evening and Happy New Year, Chair Burkert and members of Coolio Kalani'ekina'ood Board. Uh, Casey Abe from the State Highways Division. I'm glad to report our maintenance crew finally repaired the damaged highway light standards near Waileupi Circle and Kauai Highway Street. But during my field inspection last week, I noticed two new damaged light standards near Pa'aki Place and Anali Street. So I'll be working with our maintenance crew to repair them. Unfortunately, during my field inspection last week, I noticed our graffiti artists are busy at work again. So I'm working with our maintenance crew with painting over or removing the graffiti. Also during my field inspection last week, I noticed the overgrowth at Wa'oholo Street intersection that is blocking the signs and sidewalk and working with our landscaping crew on cutting back the overgrowth. And I also noticed a lot of overgrowth coming from private properties onto the state highway sidewalk. We would greatly appreciate it if the board members could reach out to your fellow homeowners and remind them that it is their responsibility to maintain their landscaping within their right of way. If there are overgrowth intrusing to our state right of way and a pedestrian or bicycle gets hurt, they can be held liable for any injuries or damages. Our maintenance crew tried to work with the homeowners, but due to shortage of manpower resources, we really need the homeowners to take care of their own landscaping. And finally, at the December's meeting, there was a request if the Highway Division had installed in other places flexible delineator posts like how we recently installed from the end of the H1 freeway eastbound to Inahua Avenue and Waikui Street intersection to prevent motorists from cutting across lanes to get to the left turn lane at Inahua Avenue. This new installation forced motorists coming from the on-ramp to make a right turn onto Waikui Street, turn around in residential driveways and crossing Kalan Highway at Waikui Street to get to Inahua Avenue, which has upset residents living in, on Waikui Street. The situation at the intersection of Kamia Mia Highway eastbound at the Acacia Road intersection in Pro City has resulted in a similar situation when we installed white delineator posts to prevent motorists from changing lanes and cutting into left lane at Acacia Road intersection. If, if you folks are familiar with this area, a lot of motorists coming from Waipio and Waipahu wants to make either a U-turn at Acacia Road to get to Sam's Clubs or a left turn at Acacia Road to get to the Pearl Highlands Center, Walmart, Fuland Farms, Sam's Club's gas station and other stores along Koala Street. We also have motors coming from the Pearl Highland Transit Center wanting to make a left turn on Acacia Road. Will go to Home Depot or bypassing Acacia Road to go into Pro City, which creates a weaving conflict with motorists from Waipahu and the Waipio area. Last year, we installed white deflect- uh, white flexible delineator posts where the double sideline uh, white stripe starts and ends at the Acacia Road intersection on Kamia Mia Highway in Pro City. Because our Public Affairs Office received complaints of vehicles cutting into the second left turn lane, including large trucks and buses who wanted to make the left turn at Acacia Road. Impatient drivers would use a less congested through lane to get closer to the intersection, then cut into the second left turn lane. This is known as queue jumping. We are getting a lot of complaints from angry motorists that this queue jumping would lead to road rage and someone would getting hurt or killed. With other motorists coming from Waipahu and Waipio, they would take the right turn into the Home Depot parking lot, make a U-turn in the parking lot and exit the parking lot and drive across Kamia Mia Highway onto Acacia Road. During certain times of the day, the Acacia Road intersection gets congested due to motors from Waipahu and Waipio area wanting to go to Sam's Club, Pearl Highlands Center and other stores along Koala Street. But as you can see from the right picture, motorists from the Pearl Highlands Transit Station encounters a traffic problem where cars must weave to get to the lane they want to go. This is a major traffic congestion problem we are trying to work out with the Pro City Neighborhood Board and their community. So each community has their own traffic problems, but the Highway Division is just trying to work with the neighborhood boards. And they're coming to see how best we can resolve their problems. We will never make everybody happy, but our goal is to achieve zero deaths and serious injuries on our roadway. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Casey, we thank you for, for working with us. And we know sometimes it seems all you get is complaints. But we are trying to make our neighborhoods more, our, our roads more safe. Um, and in that vein, I would just um, like to ask you if we are, if Kalani'ana'ole Highway on East Oahu is going to get traffic speed cameras to help control the speed of the people who are, who are speeding along Kalani'ana'ole, um, especially in the evening, they're having races. And we hear them too from all the way in the back of Inahaina Valley. Um, it's, it's, it's dangerous and um, and we're surprised that more accidents haven't occurred. But um, we really would like to see speed, traffic speed cameras on, on our stretch of the road between Inahaina and Hawaii Kai uh, and Mauna Lua.
Yes, that, that, this is, this topic you're talking about is a good um, topic to again, talk to the, your elected officials and have them talk to our director. Because we are trying to um, introduce laws to expand our speed cameras. Um, I can get more information. We're gonna start up a pilot project on the speed cam where the old uh, red light cameras still be switching to speed cameras on the thing. Uh, there was, you know, there was a news article in the paper recently. But um, we are moving forward on um, trying to implement this new speed cameras. And again, you can talk to the officers.
Thank you.
Particularly coming off, sorry. You go first. Particularly coming off of H1 onto Kalani'ole Highway, uh, they race for that light. They know it's naughty to go through orange. And people will just zoom at fifty, sixty miles an hour. And then of course, the next light is naughty and they'll try and get that one. And then you've got the traffic coming in from Kahala, trying to cut across. So I thank you very much for those white cones. It's cut off a lot of those motorists trying to push over to the left to come up Lakahi Tree, uh, Street.
Sheri, please go ahead.
Oh, Casey? Hi.
Yeah.
I don't know what that picture is up there.
Oh.
Uh, anyway, um, I just wanted to remind you that the, the triangles, the planted areas that are on Waikui, Wa'eli and Wa'oholo, they're all private property and the trees and the plantings on them are all privately owned and private property. And they're maintained by the Wailea Golf Course Community Association. So I, if you've set anybody to go to the Wa'oholo area, I hope you stop them. Because I, as we were driving here tonight, I looked over and I told my sister I thought that there was damage from the storm. So we need to have someone come and look at that. So I'm gonna talk, uh, when I, tomorrow morning, I'll be calling our community association guy and talk to him about the tree. Cause I saw like a big fat branch. So we, we've got, we've got to look at it and do something there. So I don't want you guys to come in there and hack at it, which is um.
Okay. Well, we, we worry about our liability. That's our problem. Because if we don't do anything and um, something happens.
You want to buy us new trees? If you kill the trees, which you've come close to doing, because these guys come in and just hack at them.
Okay.
Um, we have to do something about it.
Okay, so you.
Private property is what I'm telling you. So we have to deal with it.
Okay, so that, that's a challenge we have right now. Private property landscaping intrusing to the states right of way. And then if we, if, if the private.
It's not right of way. It's you've already taken your right of way. When you did the highway widening projects from the nineteen nineties and then afterwards, you took your right of way. You don't have any more in those triangles. It's private property now. So I'm just saying, you know, we have to go look at it. It happened because of a storm. We need to deal with it. That's all. And if you will allow us to work with your people and tell them what they can and cannot cut, well, then we'll work with them. But they usually just come like a wrecking crew and hack. Unless you want to hire Kevin Mul Kearns' company, and we can deal with Kevin.
Kevin, add some input, please. Come with Kevin.
But my memory's not real good, but I realized a couple of days ago, driving along Kalani'ana'ole Highway, um, I believe um, a little past the first intersection to the entrance of Kalani High School, when one is traveling toward Hawaii Kai, there's a shower tree. When I looked up, there is um, a, a large branch, a hanger, because all the leaves were wilted on it. It's gonna fall into the highway. I meant to do a three, three-one-one or call. I did not do that.
At the median?
Um, in the median street. Yeah, this is a state, state uh, property, the median. But there's one shower tree and then the, the ficus or the banyan trees. But it's a pretty good sized branch and all wilted, so means it's not connected to the tree anymore. It's stuck.
Oh, oh, it. We, we do have a problem.
Just have to remind you, Casey, that it's private property you're talking about. So you might be liable. You have liabilities all over the place. If you kill the tree, then you have to buy us a new one and not a twig. You'll have to buy a nice mature tree. Cause those trees, we've had those trees there for decades. So you know, if you guys would come and hack.
Moving forward, um, any landscaping will refer to you, Sheri, and um, you can take care of it.
Yeah, we've dealt with those guys for decades, for years. As they come out and they just cut off half the tree. Okay, that's the way it's done. Thank you, Sheri. So I know that you're not gonna send your core.